Sitting here all above the deck because we keep the house at about thirty-seven degrees. And, uh.
All right, we're live.
We're live, okay, hey. It is seven P M on the twentieth of July in the year twenty twenty. And this is a regular meeting of the State and City Council. And we're ready to go. First thing, um. The council was all there except for Councilor Jordan Ward. Um, who's excused, everyone else is here, staff is all here apparently. Uh, first thing receiving is a consent agenda for July sixth, uh, with the council minutes. Could we have some action on those please? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor and also our motion, we have a consent agenda, ask for a second.
Okay, thank you. Sir, a second please.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second to, uh, the separate. The, uh. Consent agenda has presented. Uh, more discussion possible on, um. So. Uh, Alyssa, would you pull the council on that please?
Sure. Counselor Mullin?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Um, the next, the next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing for annexation and comprehensive plan amendment application from Stealth Development, a limited liability corporation at the northwest corner of Shaft and Gulf Road. Uh, before we start, I need to read a rather lengthy script. So, uh. Bear with me folks. Here we go. Good evening, my name is Henry Porter, I'm the mayor of the state and will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the city council's public hearing in a matter of land use file number six dash oh four slash twenty. Applications for annexation of approximately nine point six acres of land at the northwest corner of Gulf Cliff Road and Shaft Road within the city limits, and amendments to the comprehensive plan map from commercial designation to residential for a portion of the parcel. The application requests the property to be zoned commercial general and high density residential. And the sound of. The hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement to be made to those defendants who cover certain matters relevant to this case. Annexation applications are required to satisfy approval criteria. Let me see. Approval criteria contained within state municipal code seventeen point twelve point two one zero point four. Comprehensive plan method applications are required to satisfy approval criteria contained within the state municipal code seventeen point twelve point one seven zero point six. All testimony, arguments, and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed toward these approval criteria or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy which you believe apply to this case. If even documents, maps, or other situations have considered by this body, they must formally be placed in the record in this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please submit them electronically to the planning staff. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba, which is the land use board of appeals, shall be raised not later than the close of the record or in following the final evidentiary hearing on this case. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity. Wow. So as to afford this body any parties to this hearing, I have put up opportunity to respond to this issue. Prior to the conclusion of this hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the obligation involved here. Contingency may take the form of holding an additional public hearing or oral testimony alone, or may consist of holding the evidentiary record open for a period of time designated by the city or submitted from a public or written notice. At this time, I would ask the audience to consider any objections to the notice that was provided in this case. I hear none. Do the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case? I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, expert, and not to or bias for any members of this council?
Mayor?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, uh, so I did speak with a resident earlier today, um. The thing that we talked about did not, uh, incorporate what we are making the decision on based on the criteria. I think that the conversation actually has to do with more of the next stage, and so it will not affect the way that I vote at all today.
All right, thank you. Uh. Okay, are there any others? If you are providing testimony during a public hearing, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff introduction. Uh, Dan?
I had to get unmuted there. So, um. To, to, to begin with, my apologies for the long opening statement from the mayor. Usually most of that information is contained in writing on a handout in the back of the hearing room, but since we're not in a hearing room and state law requires it to be provided to the participants, uh, we had to make the mayor read it off. Uh, secondly, uh, this, as the opening statement said, this is a, uh, hearing on two applications that were submitted concurrently. One to bring about nine point six acres of land into the city limits, the other to change the comprehensive plan designation from commercial to residential. The hearing that took place before the planning commission uh, at the end of June also included a third application, which was to partition the property into two, with one parcel being the area that the applicant would like to be residential, and the other, the portion of the property that the applicant is intending to keep in a commercial designation. The planning commission is the decision authority on that application for partitioning, so therefore it is not before you this evening. It is just the two applications, annexation and comprehensive plan amendment. So with that, I will, uh, sneak back into the background and turn it over to the applicant for their presentation, and then I will go, be back to go through the staff report, uh, the draft findings, and the recommendation from staff.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Before I get started, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
I don't think you all. Um. As Dan said, the, uh, my name is Zach Pals, I'm a land use planner with A K S Engineering and Forestry. We are representing Stealth Development, uh, who is here with us tonight. Um, to give you a quick summary of our proposal to annex an approximately nine point six acre parcel to the city and apply, um, city zoning to that property. Um, we would like to thank, um, Dan first and foremost for his fantastic and very prompt um, job in responding to our questions and public comments that have been received throughout the, throughout the duration of our involvement in this project. Uh, Dan's done a great job of responding to the applicable criteria, and we really appreciate that. Um, and on the same note, we think the staff report really covers a lot of these issues in, in pretty good detail, so we'll, we'll just give you a high little summary of, uh, you know, what, what we're thinking about doing. Um, talk a little bit about the applicable criteria, and then we'll preserve some time to answer any of your questions. So Dan, if you would mind flipping to the next slide, please. And you can probably skip that one too. And that one. So our site, um, as your staff report includes, is located at the west end of town, just at the northwest, um, corner of the intersection of Gulf Cliff Road and Shaft Road, as shown here with the red star, so the the blue dash line is the existing city limits in this map, and solid purple line is the state's urban growth boundary, so you can see we're just outside of the existing city limits, but well within the city's urban growth boundary. And as a reminder, I'm sure all of you know that the urban growth boundary is that area that the city is designated as being necessary to accommodate, um, development within the next twenty minutes. Next slide, please, Dan. Uh, so just real quickly, the next series of slides, we'll talk about, um, some of these same numbers in more, um, illustrative format, but just real quickly, our site's about nine and a half acres, we've got, uh, it's a big rectangle, we've got nine hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Gulf Cliff Road, about five hundred feet of frontage on Shaft Road. As Dan pointed out, um, the planning commission approved a two parcel partition in June along the boundary that we are requesting, um, for our zone change here, so the south uh, four and a half acres, uh, is intending to be zoned for general commercial purposes, and the remaining five point two acres of the site is intended to be used for all, you know, residential. But it's just, one other point I'd like to make before we move on, it's important to, um, note that the application does not include any proposal for development at this time. An application for site development would be, uh, an application, an independent application that would be submitted at some later day. Next slide, please. So here's we have the site in the yellow dash boundary, um, birds eye view, you can see again, it's located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Gulf Cliff Road and Shaft Road. Uh, the same ditch, um, is just to the west of the site in that blue, um, transparent line. Next slide, please. Gulf Cliff Road along the site's east boundary. Next line. Shaft Road on the site's south boundary, next slide. Um, the Oka State's local community is just to the northeast of the site in that area that's shown in the yellow transparent boundary. Next slide, there's some commercial development east and southeast of the site. And then, Dan, if you flip to the next slide, you'll see that the area immediately west and north, um, is, is, is in the city's urban growth boundaries we've mentioned before. Next slide, please. Um, so just real quickly to zoom in on our conceptual development plan. As you may or may not know, the city's, um, zoning ordinance requires that annexations, our applications for annexations, submit alongside them a plan that conceptually identifies how that land, um, could or will be developed once, uh, once it comes into the city and is subsequently, uh, developed. And so here we're showing, um, a multi-family residential development on the north part of the site where the city's, uh, zoning ordinance, um, that site could accommodate between about seventy and a hundred and twenty multi-family units. The south portion of the site on the right-hand side of the screen is a general commercial type of use, and, and this illustration includes approximately thirty thousand square feet of, of commercial space. Next slide, please. So as Dan mentioned, our application puts two parts, annexation being one, and then comprehensive zone change the other, so uh, the first piece is annexation of that area shown in the yellow dash boundary, and the second piece is comprehensive plan map amendment zone change to accommodate, um, uh, high-density residential designation on the north portion of the site. Currently, the entire site is designated in the city's comprehensive plan for commercial uses. Our proposal would, um, revise that to accommodate multi-family housing on the north portion of the site. Talked about the conceptual plan already, I think you can skip this. Um. So just real quickly, the staff report does a good job of talking about the approval criteria. Um, as the mayor pointed out in his introductory statement, the approval criteria are in the city's municipal code, section seventeen, seventeen twelve. Um, and essentially for annexations, comprehensive plan map amendments, and zoning map amendments, the criteria are pretty similar. Um, and Dan, if you want to go to the next slide. Um, essentially, what, what the code asks, that, that that change or the annexation be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Um, so we have, you have shown by virtue of our application and your staff has, has, um, repeated in the staff report that there is a need for both commercial and residential land as expressed in the city's comprehensive plan and other supporting documents that the annexation and zone change before you today does support. Um, our application also, um, demonstrates that the site is capable of being adequately serviced with utilities. Um, there are, there are sufficient water and sanitary sewer, as well as stormwater facilities nearby, um, to accommodate a future development on the site, or, um, as we'll get into, an amendment, uh, an amendment, uh, facilities that can be, can be made available to serve a future development on the site. Uh, for annexations in particular, um, the code asks that they be contiguous to the city limits, which you saw on those earlier slides that they are. And then, um, the code also looks at those projects are, or those, those uses or, or future uses are compatible with the character of the surrounding area, so that there aren't significant impacts, significant negative impacts to the surrounding uses. Next slide, please, Dan. Um, and again, those same criteria are kind of, I go through the comprehensive plan map amendment, um, section of the code, um, and I won't repeat them again. Um, I think just, just one thing hitting on the need that I sort of glossed over is that, um, I think one of the, one of the key pieces of information to keep in mind in regard to need for this particular annexation and zone change is that, um, in twenty thirteen, with the city's last comprehensive plan map amendment, um, there was a need for approximately hundred and seventy-four new multi-family housing units identified at that time, and since then, only four multi-family housing units have been built. So like I mentioned in, um, a previous slide, this site has the potential to generate between seventy and one hundred and twenty new multi-family housing units, which will really, um, go a long way towards meeting that, that stated goal in the comprehensive plan. Um. We have submitted, uh, a kind of a traffic memo that talks about, um, the fact that there won't be significant impact to the nearby, um, transportation system, and similar to, um, a more detailed analysis of infrastructure impacts at such time that a future application for development on the site does move forward, more detailed analyses of those impacts will be submitted to the city, so we'll submit more detailed traffic impact analysis, stormwater, stormwater or, uh, water and sewer system analysis as well. Um, again, the criteria for a zoning map amendment are, are pretty similar to a county plan amendment and annexation, so we've talked about kind of the high points there. Um, so in summary, before we get to questions, um, the application meets all the relevant approval criteria. Um, it reflects the goals and policies of the city's long-range plans, including the transportation system plan, comprehensive plan, and other, um, associated documents. We agree with staff's findings and, and, and the, the recommendation from the planning commission to approve the application, and we are happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, at this point. Uh, Dan, do you want to come back on a staff report, or are there any questions first, at this point? There will be other opportunities. But, um. Since the applicant has invited questions, I'll throw open the questions if there are any. I, I think, is that okay to do that, Dan? Dan?
I'm unmuted.
Hello?
Dan, you're muted.
Let's go, let's just go back and have a look at the questions, uh, for the fellows later on.
Thank you.
Dan?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I forgot what I was leaving.
Yes, you are, it's just.
Now, now I'm not.
Staff report.
So, um, you, you've got a very detailed staff report and, uh, draft ordinance, uh, in your packet. Uh, you should have received by email, uh, late this afternoon, a supplemental staff report. Um, I will not, uh, go through, uh, paragraph by paragraph through the, uh, original staff report, but I do want to, um, hit on a couple of, uh, key points, uh, in it. Um, and it won't be repeating some of the applicant's presentation, but I think the points that are, uh, worth repeating. Um, first, you've got before you, uh, applications for, uh, annexation and comprehensive plan amendment. You do not have before you any type of development application. Um. And so, so the decision that you're, the decisions that you need to be making tonight are, are three different independent decisions. Uh, does the application meet the criteria for approval for annexation? Does it meet the criteria for approval for a comprehensive plan amendment? And if you are going to annex the property into the city, which zones to apply to the property? My written staff report goes through the annexation criteria in a fair amount of detail. There are, uh, five criteria that apply to this application. There is a sixth criterion that only applies if, if it was, if this was a contract annexation, but it is not. So that criterion does not apply this evening. Uh, three of the five, uh, criteria are objective, uh, criteria, and, and I don't think we much for interpretation. You, you did receive some testimony that I will discuss, uh, towards the end of my report, um, questioning whether, uh, the, the criterion regarding, uh, adequate public services has been met by the application. Uh, but I think that, uh, adequate public services, contiguous, and, um, complying with state law are fairly objective things and don't take a whole lot of, uh, uh, decision-making or smoothie. Um, it's really need and compatibility with the surrounding area that give you the opportunity to, to put in place your policies or your worldview about what state, uh, should be. Um. I believe that, uh, if you look at our adopted comprehensive plan, which is what the law requires us to do, uh, as the applicant stated in their presentation, um, the comprehensive plan noted that back in two thousand and thirteen, based on the adopted growth projections, that we, uh, projected that there would be a hundred and seventy-four, uh, new multi-family homes needed in the community uh, in the next twenty-year period. We are now, uh, seven years into that twenty-year period, and, uh, there have been four, uh, multi-family units constructed since that time, so there's still, in my mind, uh, the need for, uh, additional land in the city, uh, to be able to construct multi-family housing. There is only one vacant parcel in the city limits today zoned for high-density residential, which is the only zone that allows multifamily. Um. It has the capacity for fifty to seventy or so, uh, units on it most likely, and, um, so therefore, even if that were to be developed, uh, there would still be the need for additional land to accommodate the projected need, and we would need to either be rezoning, uh, land in the city to high-density residential, or apply to high-density residential zoning to newly annexed land such as the application you have before you. Uh, while we're still talking about the annexation criteria, let me talk about the letter that you have in front of you from the San Diego War Control District that is suggesting that, uh, criterion B, uh, has not been met. Uh, that criterion is that the site is capable of being serviced or is serviced by adequate city public services. The, the gist of the comments from the San Diego War Control District is that because we only have a conceptual plan for development before us, we don't have a development plan, that, uh, the applicant has not submitted enough, um, information uh, to determine that their detention basins, uh, are big enough or, or even will work. Uh, and my response to that is, uh, the, that, that, that type of, uh, testimony is premature, we don't have a development plan, there is no requirement for a development plan with the annexation application. There is no requirement for any type of engineering or detailed, uh, assessment of the, uh, utility, uh, infrastructure, and, um, staff has a level of confidence that there are adequate utilities, uh, available to the site or can be made available to the site. There are drainage wells in Shaft Road, it's really just a matter of designing the system uh, to handle the runoff from the site, to meet the public works design standards, and we will do that during the site plan review process, should the property be annexed. Uh, going on to the criteria for comprehensive plan amendment, um, I, I would like to point out that for close to, um, forty years, the city had a comprehensive plan map that actually had this property split between residential and commercial. Um, in two thousand and thirteen, when the comprehensive plan was, uh, updated, uh, in whole for the first time since the mid to late seventies, when it was first written, the, um, looking at the stated policies that zoning lines should not, um, split, uh, properties, the comprehensive plan advisory committee recommended that the entire parcel be placed into a commercial designation. Um. Uh, and, and it has been since that time when the city council, uh, seven years ago adopted the plan. Uh, but now we are facing an application to partition it, which has been approved by the planning commission, and assign residential designation to, uh, five or five point two, uh, of the nine point six acres. Um, again, uh, looking at the issue of need, uh, we have just one, um, vacant parcel in the high-density zone, and in order to meet our, uh, housing policies, our, uh, projections for housing need, uh, we need additional land to be zoned high-density residential to provide multifamily housing. Uh, there is in your packet, uh, what's known as a transportation planning rule analysis. The state's, uh, administrative rules for, uh, how do we go about reviewing an amendment to our comprehensive plan require that, that we make findings that the results of the comprehensive plan amendment or the zoning amendment, uh, will not, shall we say, overwhelm the planned improvements to our transportation system. You all, uh, adopted a new transportation system plan just about a year ago, and, um, it calls for improvements to the intersection Shaft and Wilco Road, it calls for the construction of a roundabout, and the analysis that the applicant submitted indicated that the additional traffic that could be generated by converting this from commercial to residential, uh, from assumed commercial general to high-density residential zoning, uh, would not, uh, would, would not significantly impact the transportation system. As the applicant said in their, uh, presentation earlier, uh, that analysis is not the same level of analysis that will need to be done when development is proposed, and at that time, just like the stormwater, uh, or sewer availability. And at that time, just like the stormwater or sewer availability analysis, there'll need to be a higher level of analysis with more detail based on the actual development proposal and the complete transportation impact analysis submitted at that time. So that leads us to the zone map amendment criteria and the decision as to which zones to apply. You have four choices for the commercial portion, should you choose to split the comprehensive plan and annexation between commercial and residential. The applicant has asked for commercial general. Commercial general provides for a few additional uses than commercial retail. Interchange development is really not appropriate because it is for land that's located within 1,500 feet of a highway entrance ramp from Highway 22. So the third choice would be Commerce Park, which is a new zone that was created, I think it was about five years ago, and provides for a complete mix of almost any retail or other commercial uses, as well as small-scale light manufacturing. But the applicant, in this case, has requested commercial general. The planning commission has recommended commercial general, and so does staff. For the residential portion, the applicant has requested high-density residential to allow the construction of multifamily. As I've noted, according to our adopted plans, we expected to see more multifamily, significantly more multifamily than we have, and in order to achieve that, we're going to need additional land, so it was high-density residential. Let me turn real briefly to my, again, to my supplemental staff report that you received this afternoon. We talked about the testimony from the Water Control District about the criteria on adequate utilities. Also, in that letter from the Water Control District was referenced a statewide planning goal, eleven. The statewide planning goals, as I said in my memo this afternoon, are not applicable to individual applications for annexation or development of property. They are the goals and the guidelines that direct the city's planning process, the writing of the comprehensive plan, the adoption of our master plans, which are adopted as, shall we say, addenda to the comprehensive plan, drawing our growth boundary, writing our land use regulations. All of that activity needs to meet the statewide goals. Amending our comprehensive plan map needs to also. Goal 11 is not continent to changing the comprehensive plan map. It is a goal that directs how we do our utility planning, how we write our utility master plans, and how we will assure that we can provide adequate utility services within our urban growth boundary. So raising, in my mind, raising the goal 11 issue to this application is irrelevant. The third point the Water Control District made is reference to the stormwater master plan that called for a, some type of regional stormwater facility in the vicinity of this Back four or five years ago, when the city began the process of trying to implement that, we actually looked in this area to the north of Shaft Road and to the west of Golf Club Road as a possible site for a stormwater detention facility. We contacted, or we had somebody on the city's behalf contact the property owners, and none of the property owners were interested in having a conversation about selling their property. So we essentially moved east, worked out an agreement with the Lambert family, and as you well know, the past couple of years have been busy building the old creek detention basin that, once it is operational, will divert a substantial percentage of the stormwater currently in drainage swell along Shaft Road to Mill Creek and decrease the impacts that city's stormwater has on the sale of it. So again, I think that the reference to the stormwater master plan in their comments similarly is not relevant to the applications you've got before you. So the staff recommendation continues to be approval of the applications and assigning commercial general and high-density residential. I have provided you in supplemental staff report revised motions that make reference to the revised draft order that I have provided to you, and the revisions in that draft order are just adding the necessary findings that reflect the testimony that we received in the two emails. We got one on Sunday that was just very general comments that don't specifically address the approval criteria, and then we got this afternoon's email from the Water Control District. So the findings have been revised to reflect that testimony. And so if you get to the point of close of the hearing, that you're ready to make a motion, you've got revised motions from the staff report that was in your packet, and that's just referring to the revised draft orders. So with that, I will close and answer any questions that you may have, and this would be the time for questions of either the applicant or staff from the council.
All right. Questions for council? Who wants to start?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor.
I don't know that I have an actual question, other than are you aware that you do a great job at prepping us for this? And I appreciate, this is a question, are you aware that you do a great job of prepping us, and I appreciate all the information that you gave us, because it feels like a pretty easy decision, considering we have all the public comments already.
I'll just answer that, Roxanne. Thank you. You're welcome. I appreciate the compliment and hope that it served you well.
Okay. And a question for me. The area that's potentially zone high-density, the northwestern part of this parcel, what's the potential proximity to that rural road park across Shaft Road? Not Shaft Road, across Golf Club from that party?
It is essentially directly across the Golf Club Road, the northern portion of this property.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question, actually. You just prompted a question.
I've got my answer, so go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you. Dan, is this the same property where we have a bunch of bushes, and there was word around town that there had been some homeless individuals living within those bushes? Is this that same property?
It actually looks like Dan froze.
It does look like he froze. He's very intense in answering it.
Very. Well, he's calling me right now, so I think he might be trying to log back on.
You want me to call him?
Hi, Dan.
Councilor, I think that would be important. When we were doing that survey, they found the homeless.
Yes, I will text right now. All right. Dan's power went out, so that's why we lost him. So if you guys could give me just a second, I'm going to send him the phone number to call in on. Let me...
While we're waiting for them, sir, a quick question or two to the applicants, because we can post to them at this point.
I just sent him the information, so we just need to wait for him to pop on here. We need some hold music or something. Jeopardy music, maybe?
Alyssa, do you know any Jeopardy songs?
Do you want me to? You don't want me to sing. Yes, oh, here he is. Dan, are you there?
I am here.
Awesome.
I'm so sorry about that. Power went out, the computer went dark, the lights went off, but I guess I'm back.
Yes, all right.
I know I was in the middle of a sentence. I think it was the mayor's question about annexes across, is that, sorry, Dan?
We both talked at once.
Yes, so, again, that would be an issue we deal with during site development, to make sure that all of our access standards and separation distances are met. Again, this is not a development proposal. This is just bringing the property into the city and changing the comprehensive plan and education.
All right, understood. Okay, someone else, questions? Shall we go to proponents' testimony? Will we move along with you this? I'm sure I wouldn't want longer until we've decided on a question.
Right, no, the proponents' testimony is what would be next, and I have not received any advance to Alyssa as to whether anybody has contacted her about participating in that public hearing.
No, they have not, and there is no one else here at the community center this evening.
All right. How about opponents' testimony?
So I will just say, to remind you, that you do have the two emails, one from Susan Hackman, and one from the San Diego Water Control District. Neither of them are present to present oral testimony.
Has everyone seen both of those? I haven't seen the Water Control District's letter. It's probably on the computer here somewhere, but if that came out this afternoon, I just didn't see it. If the rest of you have, that's kind of the important thing. Everyone has both of those? I guess people could wave their hands, say yes or no. Okay, I guess everyone's seen it. Cast your vote. Have you seen both of those? I don't have your picture up, so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have seen both of them.
Okay, all right, good. How about government agencies? Anything?
The San Diego Water Control District is a governmental agency, and we've not heard from any others. I will say there was written comments that were received from Marion County Public Works, but they were relevant to the partitioning application, not to the annexation or comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any general testimony? Or has anyone, Alyssa, did anyone intend to try to be part of this hearing?
No, Mayor.
Maybe in person or otherwise?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We did have someone that I spoke to earlier, that it's a challenge for them to get testimony in. I really think we need to be discussing what the legislature is doing and letting people sign up for testimony to call in and testify that we're going to continue doing virtual meetings.
That is an option for people to contact us ahead of time, and we can give them a call-in number to participate that way.
How about, how about questions from public? Anything possible there, because here we are going around and around on Allen. It just may not be possible at this point in this format to do that. What's your further questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Are these questions also for the?
Well, that's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they could be true.
All right, so I do have a question, and it's more of a curiosity. I don't feel like it's going to, it's not extremely relevant. Perhaps it is. I don't think it's going to change anything, it's not going to change my decision. But I am curious about, like, what kind of multifamily housing you guys are planning to do, like, price-wise, because we do have a real need in our favor for more affordable type housing, not necessarily the actual definition of affordable housing, but something more on the affordable edge.
Sure. Thank you for the question again. This is Zach Bell with APS, sharing. To be perfectly honest, at this time, those questions have not even been debated.
Okay, that's fine.
Sure, I appreciate the question. It's just, those are things we haven't really thought about yet. We were kind of focusing on the annexation, and once we get through this, hopefully, we'll start having conversations about the next step.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I might add to that, I think it's important to know that state investments is very conscientious of holding all properties. It's a little different than some groups, they want to be part of the community for quite some time, so they're, you know, look forward to supplying that order.
I would love to be considered to be part of those conversations if that's appropriate.
Pretty good.
Okay, how about an after summary, if there are any other questions from the council at this point? Sure, go ahead, yeah, after summary, please.
Thank you again, so okay, but brief, again, really, I want to just thank you all for your time and for the accommodation of this virtual meeting, it went pretty well, I thought we were able to make a pretty decent presentation and get all your questions answered. Thanks again to staff for your good job in responding to all the approval criteria and public comments that came in. I think the one thing that I would add, just in our final rebuttal testimony and in closing the loop on all of the public testimony that came in, is that as part of the planning commission record, there was also a letter of support from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon that was excited about the prospect of additional multifamily housing in the city. So that's a nonprofit statewide agency that is advocating on behalf of more multifamily housing statewide. So, consistent with your plans for more multifamily housing, we are implementing those. Members across the state are paying attention to that and see that. So again, we think we're putting forward a plan that's consistent with your down plans and plans statewide, and appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, staff summary. Hello, Dan?
Hi there.
Oh, he's back.
Yeah, I'm back, I'm on a laptop using my wife's cell phone, hotspot or whatever it's called.
Alright.
We'll see how that works.
Well, I'm not familiar here, but go ahead.
Sorry.
Right, please.
So, my summary would be, and I'll be as brief as I can, you've got just these two applications for review, annexation, and comprehensive plan amendment. There is no, is no application for development tonight. And you've got a revised draft order in front of you that requires some testimony that has been received yesterday and today. And your motions should, if you are attending to words of approval, should be to request that revised draft motion as provided in my supplemental that reports was after that.
Okay, thank you, Dan, and I don't have that supplemental in front of me. It didn't come off the internet this afternoon, so I may have referred to one of the councilors that has that in front of them to, if we, as we, if we incline more approval on this, it would be a, it would be still in resolution 1012, I believe.
We're against 1045.
1041, no. I'm sure that I've got that in front of me, anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I have. Wait, let's go on, if there's no objection, I'll more close the hearing and vote to council deliberations on this. We'll get with that? Alright, alright, here we go. Close the hearing and vote to council deliberations, so councillor, please, your fellow colleague.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I am really excited about this potential for Dayton. It's clear that there's a need. I really think that that's an area that could use some more multifamily housing and commercial or commercial businesses that can be then supported by some of that multifamily housing that's there. I'm excited about anyone being interested in that property. I know that it's one of the properties over there that's kind of been looked at for a long time without any movement, and so I'm excited to hear that the Fair Housing Council is also happy with that, because they do keep their eye on making sure that we're providing what our residents need. And we do need multifamily housing, so I'm, I know it's going to be a support of this, and then I'm looking towards the development stage where we go and look at the site plan and everything, so.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, thoughts, nuts deliberations? There's quite a list of options on this as we move towards some kind of a motion. It's, this is unusually demand-based, unusually complex, or at least the options are. So, what would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion, where's the word here? I move to approve the application of self-development LPLC land use file number 5-04/20 for annexation and comprehensive plan amendment and assigned commercial general zoning to the commercial portion of the property and high-density residential to the residential portion of the property by enacting ordinance number 1045 as revised.
Second, councillor Patty.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve both applications. The way I've got it here, I don't have that included, so at the end, I have to ask for some help here. Approve both applications of first consideration of ordinance 1045. Approve the application of self-development LPLC and the numbers, parcel numbers, annexation and comprehensive plan amendment for the site for zoning to the portion of the property and I against, against it, I against, excuse me, residential to the residential portion by enacting ordinance 1045 as presented.
As revised.
As revised, excuse me, thank you, I just don't have that. It didn't revision, as revised. That's where I heard as a motion at the second. And discussion, what would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor, this is councillor Patty.
Yes?
I'll go ahead and echo somewhat what councillor Hook said, this is a pretty easy decision, just very detailed stat analysis here, and the applicant did a very good job putting together the application. So I just want to compliment you on going to bring that through, and I'm looking forward to seeing the high-density residential area in our town, because as councillor Hook mentioned, we need it, we need more houses stocked in our community to make some good competitions for small landlords around here and have some of the places for folks to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Anyone else? You folks ready to go to a decision? If we are, Alyssa, would you pull the council on this first?
Yes. Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor Patty?
Yes.
Councillor Mullen?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes four to zero.
Under the closing statement, could we, if we're anything else for tonight? Alright, thank you, Dan. The council's action may be appealed where the plaintiff is, and the meaning of this notice of decision that will allow new sport of appeals under the order of statute number Okay, we're done with that. Thank you, folks. Thank you, AKAS, for being here, and I hope I may do other things, what else is going on? General business.
Thank you.
What was you saying, somebody, somebody want to jump in here?
Yes.
Okay, general business, resolution number 1012 of five-year local option tax for partial support of the library, pool, and parks program. And there's this scandal, both.
Hello, Mayor.
Tell us what you think of this, alright?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to summarize my staff reports. Basically, what you have before you is consideration of the local option levy tax. This is resolution 1012, so as, just as brief summary, as you may recall, the city has a local option levy for our parks, pool, and library. It's currently assessed at 60 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. It expires on June 30th of 2021. So last May, we went out with a 70 cent recommendation per thousand of assessed value, and that was unsuccessful. So currently, the city has two more opportunities to try to pass the local option levy in November of this year and May of next year of 2021. So the challenge is going to be, when is the right time to do that, and how to connect with voters? And what staff did is we met with stakeholders, we got together with stakeholders from each of the three entities, the library, the pools, and the parks, and talked with them and asked them what they wanted to see the council do, understanding this is your decision on what you think is the best path forward. And unanimously, those groups of stakeholders wanted to see the city take this option to the voters again in November. What they wanted to see was a graduated increase of that rate. Unfortunately, after discussing with the city attorney, that isn't an option. So before you is consideration of kind of a compromise of what the stakeholders wanted to see, which is a 65 cent per thousand assessed for five years. So there is no real easy timing or solutions, it's just a matter of trying to figure out ways to be successful, and so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. We also have staff members who are part of this discussion, Susanna and Jana with finance the library were as well, so if we need to, we can have them pop on to answer any questions as well. So with that, I'll turn over to questions.
Let me throw, we're going to, I'll go through by going real quick. November is rather the really exciting time, there's more ways than one. Does anyone else think we'd better just stay out of the November and come back in next May? Would there be requests?
Mr. Mayor, this is councillor Patty, I would respond to that and say, you know, and talking with Keith in the past, that was kind of my takeaway, is that perhaps presidential year wasn't the best time to bring this forward on ballot, and perhaps wait until May. So I was kind of curious to hear the reason for kind of the switch as far as from May to November.
Well, really, I'll say the same thing, and I think I said in my staff report, which is, I have an elections background, so this is something I'm familiar with, I talk to my peers in this area, I talk to our city attorney. Taking forward a levy during the election season, during a presidential election, is incredibly challenging. I think the simplest way to say is to try to get the signal through the noise, if you will, of trying to connect with voters during a time when the energy's going to be spent on races that have much more political interest, if you will, not to take away from our levy, but are really driven towards the presidential, the senate races, the house races, and kind of down-ballot. So it's really challenging to get that signal through the noise. I have been upfront with that, I think I said that in my staff report as well, I had that conversation with the stakeholders to say to them, you know, the concerns that I had, they felt like, and their recommendation was to still take it forward in November, feeling like they could do the work behind the scenes to connect with voters. So I've said all along, this is the decision of the council, you know, this is the challenges. If we wait till May, of course, that's the last chance we would have to pass it before the levy would be done. I think there is concerns and information that seems to indicate two other taxing entities will be coming forward in May as well. So, you know, there's concerns of even waiting to May, the challenge would be, you know, three levies on there at once. I think the challenge, if we're having an honest discussion, is a failure in November could become a real negative in trying to bring it back forward in May, because voters generally will get fatigued with continuously being asked the same question. Real concern that you have to have, you know, that voters say, well, I've been supportive of this, but you keep bringing this forward, the will of voters has been no twice, you know, why bring it forward? I think one of the recommendations is making some changes, so that way, you know, we can bring forward something that's a little bit different, instead of bringing forward something that's the same every time. You know, the other big thing about this is COVID-19 and the economic impacts, where we're going to be in November, where we're going to be next May, is there a good time? The decision to bring forward the 70 cent levy was done at a time before COVID was a reality, we felt that was, you know, a good time to do it, we had a lot of discussion with these same stakeholders. It just so happened that COVID hit and the economic uncertainty hit, and that's a challenge, just none of us know when is going to be the better time, when will situations be improved? So, you know, I've been open and honest about my concerns in November, but the reason for the change was the stakeholders unanimously asked to go ahead and ask for this to be on the November ballot.
What time do you want to begin then? Go ahead.
No, I think I'm, I think I was confused a little bit of which election we're going for, because it sounds like there's pros and cons to both of them. I personally was kind of leaning towards thinking that May might be a better option in that what I'm hearing that we're going for, because now it's been due right to November, so I'm just real confused on which one we're going.
Well, the decision really is yours. As presented, what this would do would be to take a 65 cent per thousand assessed value levy to the voters in November, but the decision would be yours on what you wanted to do, whether you thought that was a good time to do it. And then honestly, if it failed in November, we'd probably come back at 60 cents per thousand again in May and try it that way. So really, the recommendation coming forward is listening to the stakeholders who are the people that are most invested in the parks, pool, and library. We held a Zoom meeting with all of them to lay out the pros and cons and to discuss this, and that's where the recommendation has sort of come from. I don't think there was any real feeling that one would be more successful than the other, I think the concern from the stakeholders were they would rather have another opportunity instead of waiting till May, but that feeling that waiting to May just puts us in a difficult situation. The other challenge with waiting till May, and Susanna can jump in if she wants to on this, but is, you know, it'd be a challenging budget to write in terms of kind of preparing two budgets, potentially one for if it fails, one for if it passes. So that's going to be the challenge that we're going to have going forward, and I see Susanna popping in there as well. So there really is no easy answer, I do think November's going to be a challenging time to get the message through, to get people to vote down ballot and to be engaged and active in that. So that was one of the challenges we talked about with the stakeholders.
All questions, right? Uh, yeah. I was, Dan, or Keith, I was curious about kind of what the outcome was for like a plan for outreach from these stakeholders, if they mentioned what their plan was for November versus May.
Well, I think the feeling was the COVID issue really put them behind in terms of community outreach, sort of distracted them a bit from doing some of the work that they normally have done. I think there's a feeling now, a more of an understanding of what they can do with COVID, it was more of a case of trying to make sure that they reach out to all of their stakeholders, that they do more door-to-door work, which isn't ringing our doorbells, but it's dropping materials off at that. It was making sure they had materials go out in a more timely fashion. I was working on a voters pamphlet idea of trying to, they had three people who put in letters of support, but to try to get letters, not necessarily a letter of support, but a statement that basically says the following, people support the levy, and try to get key people of the community to support that as well. I think one of the interesting things was there was no public opposition or organized opposition, which is always a nice thing. So the feeling was, you know, kind of a unfortunate set of circumstances led to a close loss, so that the turn can be really just them getting out and really pounding the pavement and being more engaged. And I think also, not trying to put words in their mouth, but the feeling of they really need to be engaged because, you know, there's a risk this won't pass. We pass so often, so many times, and that, I think the feeling was maybe they got a little bit comfortable or lax with the COVID, just kind of that perfect storm, if you will. And so there's more of a motivation now to really make sure and understand that they can do the work that needs to be done. We as a city, just the city itself, not the city council members, can provide information, but we can't actively do that. So that work would really have to come from them, and they indicated that that's what they would be willing and wanting to do.
Keith, there is, there is the college, the fire district, the school district, who want to make for, for language. For the school district, there will be a choice.
Yes. The indication we have, from what I understand, and I haven't heard directly, but the fire district will be going back in May from their levy that failed at the same time as ours did. The school district had initially planned on being on this ballot and decided not to because of the COVID issue. So there would be an expectation that they could as well be on that next May ballot. And so anytime, you know, this isn't, this isn't a secret, anytime there's three levies on a ballot, that's going to be a challenging situation as well. So the feeling of being the only levy on November, I think, appealed to the stakeholders as well, that this was a chance to be the sole focus of levy.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. Questions for Keith, is there any chance that they can turn around and put themselves off of their levy out at this point? Or has the deadline passed for that?
No, we're here in front of you because, you know, we have a deadline coming up, but this was kind of when we needed to make a decision, right? So it's still possible that they could bring it forward. I'll just say, anybody who's advising them would probably say not to go in November. But they're not in a situation like we're in necessarily either, where, you know, we really have a hard deadline. They have a little more flexibility, if you will. So it isn't necessarily caring apples to apples, right? And so, you know, their situations are a little bit different. Not to say the school isn't, you know, doesn't have a need or the fire district have a need, but it's not something that if they fail to do it by X date, that could have an impact that our levy will have if we're not able to successfully pass it.
For recording. Mr. Mayor. Uh, Keith, Keith, are the, are the stakeholders aware that some of us, councilors, myself, being one of them, is very interested in helping with outreach, especially with some of my other community involvement that I got going on that would be beneficial to getting that word out to community members?
I think what happened during the discussion that we had was that those different groups kind of realizing that they're going to need to try to get as many stakeholders as they can and to get as much investment from the community as they can. And that's what they seem to be committed. So, you know, had entities from all three that were there and spoke and were active. And so I think they realized that's going to be the key to success. And the key to success, when, you know, when you're trying to get through, you know, the signal and the noise is what I say, but to get through all of the other things that are going to be getting a lot of attention with the presidential election, the senate election, the house election, you know, the local election, the Oregon legislation legislators, you know, all of those things are going to be on the ballot. So it's going to be a busy ballot. And so to get through to all those folks who are going to be voting, and presidential elections, of course, attract the most voters. So you really need to try to make sure that you get to those people who are likely to vote. So they definitely seemed engaged in trying to do work and spent part of that discussion just talking about how they were going to accomplish that. So I think, yes, to answer your question, long-winded there as I was, was yes, I think they really want to make sure that they get a feedback from and support of community leaders and stakeholders.
Mr. Mayor, if there's other questions, this is Counsel Patty. I'd like to make a question. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a motion to approve resolution number 1012.
A second. Okay, a motion to second to approve resolution from a five-year option, local option, to support the library, pool, and parks program. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty again. I just wanted to go ahead and say I kind of came to this thinking that perhaps we'd have to modify it in May based on what I had talked to Keith about previously, but kind of hearing what's coming from stakeholders, it sounds like, you know, this is probably a better way to go. And I just wanted to point out that, you know, your voice does make a difference. We listen to our stakeholders and, you know, they came up with a different idea and we were sent into it here. That's what I would just like to comment on.
Right.
Yes.
I want to agree with everything that Counselor Patty said, and then also just extend my official offer to help with outreach. I just want people to know that this is important to us as a council. You know, we love the services that come with this levy, and we, I mean, we don't want to have to be talking about this next year of what are we going to cut? And, you know, possibly have things kind of have to, I don't want to say the word shut down, but like, I'm just, I'd rather put all my effort in that I possibly can to help pass it. And, yeah, just definitely agree with Counselor Patty that I was also thinking May would be better until there was a little bit more explanation. So thank you so much for all the involvement of the stakeholders and all the information provided.
All right. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't have a lot of super complete thoughts, I don't think, but my politically novice gut kind of thinks that we should also kind of probably take advantage of the enthusiasm that's going to be happening in November. I think it's going to be a pretty wild time, and I know it's just, you know, probably my guess is that, you know, turnout is going to be at all-time highs. I think this past May's ballot was kind of suppressed by a lot of different factors, especially locally with COVID and some of the local races kind of, or the national races kind of been decided already, and some of the local races kind of not having that kind of competition other than, you know, the, hey, you're opponents of the house district. So, yeah, anyway, all that being said, I think it's a good idea to kind of fire all of our bullets at this one and go ahead and get it on in November.
Thank you, Ben. Well, this, that's what this resolution aims to set. So, and that's, that's all well and good. Anything else before we go to the decision? On this one. Okay, Alyssa, why don't you go ahead and call the council on this one, please?
Sure. Counsel Hook?
Yes.
Counsel Patty?
Yes.
Counsel Mullen?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to zero.
All right, thank you. Our next piece of business this evening is a cooperative agreement with Marion County for a community development block grant. Mr. Flashman, are you still there somewhere?
I am.
Boston, the desert of the corral.
Oh. Yeah. Some place, uh,
There he is.
The red rocks, the marinas, well, I love the, you know, I can't look at my wife. Oh, the hostess, asking, it's not, here I am. Sorry about the heck, it's a little cold here. I can't even turn on the lights, you still have no power. I'm sitting with my face in the window. So, real, real quick background. The community development block grant program is a federal program that's been around since 1974, so almost 50 years. For larger communities, they get a direct allocation of funds from the federal government. Smaller communities, such as state, need to participate by applying for money through a state program. This year, Marion County crossed the threshold to become large enough to be what's called an entitlement to community. They will be getting direct funding from the federal government for the community development block grant, for homeless programs, and for other housing. Yep, the city of state wants to have a say in how those local funds are spent. This is our opportunity to be involved. If we do not enter into this cooperative agreement, then we will not essentially have a seat at the table. So that's, that's my brief. Oral description of what's in the staff report. Got a copy of the agreement that the county has put out through the cities in their county. I should say the cities other than Salem. The Salem department is large enough to be entitled to community. And the staff recommendation is to enter into this agreement by authorizing the city manager to execute. I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ben. At this point, questions, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Alyssa.
Can we have clarification on who would be at that table of discussion? Like, who in our city could be? Is it open to the whole community? Just some clarification.
No, I think Marion County will be asking the city government. On one hand, being at the table will be a, or a number of representatives of city government, and that will be up to a future city council to decide who those representatives are. The, just like several weeks ago, you held a public hearing on the potential community development for a block grant application. Prior to adopting their, what's called consolidating program, Marion County will have to hold public hearings, and that will be the opportunity for anyone from the public to participate and say, here's how I think the funding should be spent.
Thank you so much.
Other questions or thoughts, I'll answer. Seems like an easy one. We should take part in this if we can.
I'd like to say I think this could be substantially advantageous for the city of state to go here. I worked with the community development block program in my previous experience in another state, and there were a number of activities that were eligible for funding in that state and under the federal program that the state of Oregon does not participate in. I think this could be an opportunity for us to be looking at some neighborhood projects for streets and utility improvements that right now the state of Oregon does not allow. It could be the opportunity for some economic development activity that right now the state of Oregon does not allow, but are committed as, under the federal, I don't know what to, guidelines, my guidelines, the federal rules as to how much we can spend.
Thank you, Gavin, again. Other questions or thoughts, or could we go to the decision on this pretty soon here?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no more questions or thoughts, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. I note that the city of state enters into a cooperative agreement with Marion County for the administration community development block grant for the 2021, 2022, and 2023 for the fiscal years, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. I'm talking.
Was there a second there?
And Counsel McDonald.
Counsel Mullen, I have to go on, so everyone jumps on this, that's good. Any more discussion, Mullen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I am super excited to be, everyone of us unmuted our microphones to second this. This will be, knowing what I know about how politics works and the legislature's money works, this is an incredible opportunity for us to be, and I am overjoyed that we were presented with this opportunity to vote on this.
All right. Other questions, a broad time. Alyssa, go ahead and call the government on this one, please.
Sure. Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Mullen?
Yes.
Counsel Hook?
Yes.
Counsel Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Keith, do you have anything this evening that you can share on this? A little majority now?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else you would like to say, Ben? Okay. And, Keith, that's not.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are, is it okay for the council, for councilors to present anything that they would like to say today?
We'll start off long, long discussion, okay?
So I just wanted to make comment because I had received something in the mail from the city. It was a utility sheet, and I just wanted to give a little bit of, maybe, maybe get an explanation of kind of what that meant, because I feel like it was a little bit lacking of why am I receiving this? My initial thing was, oh, gosh, did I forget to pay? And then it was, oh, gosh, is this an announcement that our rates are going up? And then as I read on, I kind of figured out what it was about. But maybe if we could have an explanation of kind of what that was would be helpful so that we could then reference that explanation for people when they have questions, because I did have a question on that today.
I'm going to have Susanna pop on because that came from the finance department. There she is.
The flyer was to inform the community of the rate changes for the fiscal year and just also letting them know with COVID-19, how they can communicate with us, how they give us extensions, or what they needed to do. We created online forms that they can online sign and fill out now. So it was really just us communicating with the community. We did get some positive feedback from people calling in today, very pleased with the letter, was glad that we explained it. We did get one call and asked, uh, what did I get this form? And so it was nice to be able to talk to some people today and let them know. We really want people to understand, I mean, our utilities are complicated, so this was our opportunity to say, hey, we're still here. I know it's hard because we're closed because of COVID, but this is what we're doing. Here's some online now, go look here, you can see us easier. Just kind of keep that communication going and support.
Thanks. Yeah, and, you know, once I realized what it was, I was like, this is awesome. I just thought it might be good to have that explanation so that they can say, okay, here's the explanation of it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we kind of know what a large call is, what's this for?
I don't remember that the community members made that setup.
What? I think we had a hundred confession there, I heard, uh, somebody spilled the beans on, what was this for? Anyway, no, it's all right. We're doing good.
Well, I think it helps because we're not doing door hangers, we're not going to be sending out the middle notices, they're just going to get their invoices only beginning of the month and just letting them know, so I'm cool for them.
Thank you. Again, other questions, thoughts, or anything? Well, if there isn't anything, Alyssa, go home.
I just want to listen in to the rest.